The entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as indicated or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Workman and Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. This time I ask that all cell phones, Blackberries, PDAs, and any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or turned off. Kathy doing the roll call?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krantz?
He's here.
Mr. Zanziaka?
Here.
Mr. Shafki?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Strath?
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Who has prepared this work? Thank you. Kathy?
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz, Mr. Zanziaka?
Yes.
Mr. Shafki?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strath?
Yes.
Mr. Teagle?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz back. What did I miss?
He voted yes.
Oh, I certainly did. That's the minutes of the January fourteenth regular meeting.
Moment is published.
Second.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Mr. Zanziaka?
Yes.
Mr. Shafki?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Strath?
I'm staying.
Mr. Teagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Next is public comment for any items not on the agenda, seeing no one here. We'll move on to number five, the zoning board of appeals report. Mr. Prent?
Yes, it was a lengthy two-month adventure. We had three major, well, three items, one major. Briefly, I'll go over them because what is, what I see happening is that we're gonna, I feel, and so did actually the zoning board of appeals, they gave me a directive after, that we have to look at some of our ordinances to modify them for conditions that were just not expected if we were growing out the city. First one I'll mention is a, is a connection between two industrial buildings on Stevenson. And what happened is the two buildings are owned by two different companies but are leased by the same company. And they wanted to have some kind of connector for safety, weather, et cetera, to connect the two buildings for, for their operations. And it's really not allowed under ordinance. So we had to really think hard on it and figure out a way that we could approve it. And we did find a way and we approved it. But basically, it was a conditional variance that connection will have to be removed when the tenant leave vacates one of the two places or both places. But it just, it made a lot of sense. And we've, we've run across those recently at the zoning board where something makes an incredible amount of sense to pass and yet our ordinance gets in our way. So that was the one item. The next item was a situation where our, our ordinance before the 2011 ordinance allowed a parapet wall to go above roughly thirty-five feet up in a commercial business zone. And other, other businesses had gone up to maybe, well, one was thirty-four, eight inches, one was thirty-two, et cetera, close, you know, above thirty foot. But the new, our new ordinance won't allow that, only allows up to thirty feet. So even though there's existing businesses that have a taller parapet wall allowing them to put better signage on, et cetera, these two, by renovating their building and updating it, making it look good, they're penalized. So it was like, how do we do that? I don't know. It's just kind of another little unknown thing that got passed and maybe nobody looked at those kind of details. Anyway, that's another, we did find a way because of the, basically, it was six hundred and seventy feet back from the right-of-way. And it was the difference of five feet in that kind of distance, I don't think anybody can notice it from the street. So we, we, we worked out as a dimensional variance. The large, the one, the item that took the vast majority of our meetings was one regarding how we define, or how we define a particular organization, either as a community center or a place of worship. That was rather lengthy. What we found was, we did find that it was a place of worship ultimately. We defined it as that, and such, they had to find a location that fits that, that ordinance. But it brought out a lot of questions of how we even, how do we define place of worship? And one of the, one of the quick things, I'm just, I'm not going to belabor the meeting too long with this, but how we define even, even place of worship in our ordinance. Bear with me for a second here. I have it pretty well organized right there. Place of worship right now is a site used for, is defined as in our ordinance, as a site used for or intended for regular assembly of persons for conducting of religious services and accessory uses there within. The point is, some religions really don't meet that definition. They don't, they don't have a regular assembly, some religions. They, they meet as things come up. And it, it made it very difficult for us to make a decision if this was really a place of worship or not. I think what we should do at what, some point when we look over definitions in our ordinance is to meet with or have representatives from the, the Troy area interfaith group and help us better define what a place of worship is. Because it's, our multicultural city has numerous different religions, and it seems that it's probably handed down from generation to generation over time with ordinances as goes, as we know, most, many ordinances go across the country and they're basically copied and pasted. I think as one of the most diverse communities, we have to look into that and read, help define that more clearly with our very diverse population. I don't want to go into a lot of detail about that. You can look at the TV broadcast because it's quite lengthy. But in a nutshell, the reason we found it was a place of worship. We relied on actually two or three things. One was how the organization defined itself. And on their latest corporate papers to the state, which was updated September twenty-fourth of two thousand thirteen, they defined themselves as worship place. Number two was when they were asked to describe what they, what happens at, within their organization. They gave thirty-two bullet points. Every one referred to some kind of faith. I can't remember, I think it was about fourteen items. Talked about the Imam that conducted these, not prayer sessions or services, they're more of a speaking engagements. And additionally, I think, can't remember, maybe four or five other items that, every one of those thirty-two items referred to some kind of religious, religious item. So they themselves defined themselves as very religious. And the way they filed with the state was worship place. So we really relied on their own input to define what they called themselves, even though the title of the, the organization's called Adam Community Center. That really, that comes to another thing. We don't have a definition on our ordinance that defines community centers. So, and then what came up even after that was, well, what if it's a small church? What if it's, or, or a place of worship? What if it's just a home? Do we need that fifty-foot setback all around? So there was a lot of discussion. It really got into, we need a serious review of how we redefine, we define, the city defines place of worship, and then how our ordinance applies to that. So that was, that was really it in a nutshell. Like I say, it's quite lengthy, and if anybody would like further information of how we decided on it, I'd be happy to show you. My, I've got a thick folder on it, took a lot of time. So that concludes my report.
Can I give you back on that?
The reason, the ramifications of, of that particular use being defined as a place of worship, it affects the development. What they, what they did is they purchased the property with the intent, well, they told us it was a community center. They're permitted by right and there's no, there's no standards, specific standards for community centers in the ordinance. For places of worship, there are specific standards, and those standards are, there's setback requirements fifty feet from the right-of-way, fifty feet from a budding property that's user's own residential, and that includes parking. So the building's non-conforming, the parking lot's non-conforming, and in order to occupy the building now, they need dimensional variances, which they, which is no guarantee, they've got to demonstrate practical difficulty. So it, it's got repercussions for, for this potential use going down the road, so.
The other thing that I learned, I did read all the background material in the packets. And one of the things that stood out to me was that they also declared their IRS classification was, was as a place of worship too. So they received their five oh one C three status based on that. So it's, was it interesting, very interesting, and that's one of the reasons I recommended that Tom Prent continue as the BZA representative at our last meeting. He was at the December meeting and has done a thorough study of all the material. And are there any other questions for Tom at this point? Mr. Schultz?
I'd just like to know what building sits six hundred and seventy-five feet back from the right-of-way? Oh, that is a, in the Oakwood, Oakland Plaza Strip Mall that's on John R.
West.
It's, it, yeah, it's.
North side, north side of John R.
Well, it's, it's on the, it's east, east of John R, it's across the street from Oakland Mall.
I know where.
Okay. It's a row of buildings that are on the east part of that property, they're six hundred and seventy feet back. It's basically a sea of parking lot before you get to the stores. Where, where is the property at? That's what was in question. Where is the property in question? Why did they want it purchased? They wanted it. Oh, the, the religious organization, that was on Rochester Road, near south of Long Lake, yeah. The old Marinelli's restaurant. Yeah, they were gonna sell it, I didn't even know.
Oh, it's been closed for a while.
It's been closed for a long time. Was it their last Sunday? Was it? The issue with the definition of religious place of worship, is it the word regular meeting? Is it regular? Yeah, that was, that was one that their attorney kind of honed in on. They said, well, we don't have regular. You know, they do and they don't. I mean, it's somewhat organized, but that type, that, I, I don't know a lot about Islamic religion. I have visited a few mosques and listened to a few people talk about it, and it seems that, you know, they don't really have, and I may be misspeaking this, but they don't really have like a, a mass on a Sunday. They don't really have a gathering date and time set up every single.
They have scheduled calls to worship.
They do. Calls are.
Calls for prayer.
And that's, that's seven days a week. But that's not a specific service because they don't rely on someone to preach to them. They look at their religion as between them and God. It's a direct connection. There is, they do have speeches and lessons and training and things like that, but it's, it's a different way cert, a certain, people worship, it's just a different way than, let's say, a Christian or Jewish people.
There's not a lot of mosques being built these days too, because they're very expensive for one thing. And so they do have what they call these small community centers. They could even be in a private home, you know, so. It's something to think about. If there are no further questions, I think we'll move on to the DDA report. Mr. Savinat?
The DDA actually had a meeting this month. And I guess the, the most significant issue is that they've talked about replantings and maintenance in the boulevard in Big Beaver. So they're gonna, I mean, I don't have anything concrete to tell you about that, but they're, they've talked about the importance of doing something like that moving forward, so.
Maintaining.
Yes, improving and maintaining.
Right. Can I ask Brent a question on that? Yes, Mr. Schultz. Is, is it going to remain the DDA's responsibility for the Big Beaver meeting because it was an eyesore this summer?
Well, they, because they, they, there's been less maintenance recently than there was, than there was historically, so.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the city step up and do that? If the DDA doesn't have funds to do it, it is part of the city of Troy.
Yeah, it's actually the Oakland County right-of-way. They're, they're intending to step up maintenance on, on the boulevard, the DDA.
And agenda item number seven is the planning and zoning report. Mr. Savinat?
Did anyone have insomnia last night? Watch local cable television? How'd I do?
Oh, real well.
Oh, okay. Well, those who don't know what I'm talking about, the rezoning for the, the Amber townhouses and lofts. I went before city council last night. If you recall, planning commission had a public hearing, correct? Two, but one was actually not really recognized. But the most recent one, there was a six to two, positive recommendation of support, and it was defeated, three votes to four in favor last night. So it was denied, the rezoning application was denied by city council. It was a, I was up there, I was in the room for two, almost two and a half hours. It was a long public hearing. I think fourteen or fifteen people spoke. There was a lot of discussion, it was very involved.
Any highlights for the no votes?
No votes. One council member felt it was a safety, a safety issue with, with that intense development on their corner for pedestrians and for traffic. One council member felt that it was a, it was somewhat of a mistake of the master plan. The master plan really didn't, didn't comprehend that small of a parcel, a one-point-two-acre parcel in and of itself being developed. It was more, if, the council member thought that, that the intent was to have larger, larger portion of that, that parcel developed. I believe another council member thought just was, it was a bad fit with the, with the potential height. Potential height of seventy-two feet in that area. And I think that was what two, two city council members said. A range of reasons.
Mr. Schultz? Based on the discussion we just had about CBA, do you know if anything is moving forward on the meeting room? Talking about small religious organizations or small facilities up on Square Lake?
Oh, yeah. The last conversation, conversation I had with their, their architect was, engineering for the site was a challenge because of the topography.
Maybe that's why it wasn't developed for the last hundred and fifty years.
I think they got it for cheap and they didn't realize until they got into the engineering process what it was gonna be and.
It's about like that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have a saying, I probably said it to the planning commission, if there's vacant property in Troy right now, there's a really good reason why it's vacant.
It's true.
I just wondered if it was moving forward because that was the same situation in Adams. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll go on to the other business, number, agenda item number eight is the master plan amendment update and discussion. Is that gonna be you, Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lead off, but Brent will jump in.
Did you load up the car?
I did. I'll just pull it up. Very, very short roundabout.
Start, go to escape. Then go to view, slideshow.
Mr. Hudson at the last meeting had asked for an update to the master plan, and so we felt tonight would be an opportune time to do that. Dick Carlisle, our, my boss and the president of the company apologized for not being here. He is gonna be the one spearheading this effort, but he got called away to another event. So he will be actively involved moving forward with this. And so I'm more of the messenger tonight based on what he has put together than the actual drafter of what we're gonna see tonight. Just a little background of the, the two thousand eight master plan. The approach really was to think outside of the traditional development patterns that the city of Troy's experienced. We're looking at exploring green building, sustainable development, context sense of design, innovate areas of mixed-use development, and find a balance between economic growth, economic development for strategic growth. We started to see that, you know, especially on Big Beaver, we started to see some of that development come to fruition. As well as investigate site and architectural design guidelines, form-based codes, and then essentially create an effective public participation process and emphasize policy. All of this kind of led us to the adoption of the zoning ordinance specifically, the site and architectural design guidelines moving forward. We didn't evaluate of the, of the master plan, and for the most part, I think collectively, we've all figured that it's in pretty good shape. We're really, we really kind of did a very, the, the planning commission and the, the city did a very good job of really putting us in a good position moving forward. However, there will be probably minor tweaks that need to be looked at. And what this does is because we think it's in such a good shape, it allows us to really focus on specific site areas that we think are really underperforming at this time for, for various reasons. So one of the, one of the things that we are, are gonna do as part of the master plan is do some target, and, um, target areas and target area plans. When we first came to the planning commission, it was probably in April of last year, our main focus, we talked about, brought up was, was the Maple Road and the IB zoning district, specifically kind of south end of the city. And speaking with the city manager and other city folks, they wanted to kind of expand where we look at. So this, one study's kind of grown into four different areas. The other area we're gonna be looking at is Big Beaver, mostly for zoning ordinance, potential zoning ordinance amendments and policy changes there. North Troy, that's mostly office market and kind of more desire to mix uses in that area. And Rochester Road, specifically from Rochester Road, from Big Beaver to Waddles. We can expand that area a little bit, but this really is focused on the GB zoning in this area and potential zoning amendments because of the issues we had with the height of, of the mini storage building.
Zeroing in on these, on these sites.
I'm gonna go into that right now, but go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say the, the difficulty of defining, you know, what.
Well, one of the issues, thank, one of the issues we had was define the boundary of the study area. And that, we don't need to necessarily define a boundary per se, but for data collection that we're gonna do, we kind of need to define the boundaries. Now, some of the study area will obviously leak past what these boundaries areas. But these are the generalized boundaries that we've drawn up just for data collection, parcel data, building data, assess, assess values data, et cetera. So I don't want you to think these are hard and fast boundary lines in terms of what area we're gonna study, but the kind of the boundaries right now we've defined for, just for data collection. If you want us to add other areas to this, please let us know. But this is generally defined by Maple Road and the IB zoning area, which includes the area outlined in the boundary. We did not include, include the planned motor vehicle area because that really is, is, we don't really need to study that, we don't feel like, feel like it's in pretty good shape. And in the long run, the land use there is not gonna change very much in, in the near future. This really is gonna be your review of building reuse. We obviously have a lot of buildings in there that are underperforming or vacant at this current time, and then old industrial buildings that need to be reused. We're gonna look at mixed use and commercial development as well as in overall as employment creation. One of the things we've been a little surprised about is, we've talked to a number of real estate people, and they always talk about Maple Road as a very, a, as a kind of an untapped market right now, and there's a lot of potential development, opportunities on Maple Road, but we're not seeing that. And one of the reasons we're not seeing that, we don't really fully understand at this point yet. So one of the things we're gonna be studying here is me with the, with the market folks understanding, get a better idea about why Maple Road really isn't developing like we intended it to do. We think with the development of MJR, that's gonna be a kind of Kickstarter to get stuff moving on the corridor. But we think there are similar opportunities that we need to look at too. Jump in whenever you want.
Yeah, and in Maple Road, one of the reasons is, it's, it's Maple Road and the IB district is, is a lot of those industrial subdivisions that come off of Maple Road have a very strong relationship with Maple Road. And how Maple Road goes, so go the subdivisions and vice versa. So the thought is if we can, if we can stimulate repurposing, redevelopment, reuse in, in the industrial subdivisions, that'll spill over on Maple Road and be synergistic and help each other. And they're kind of married to each other, you know, in that respect, so.
The second area of studies, Big Beaver Road. Big Beaver Road is, is all, is potentially maybe been overplanned and overstated at this point, to be honest. You've got the big, you've got the Big Beaver corridor plan, you've got the master plan. We're not gonna do a full in-depth study of Big Beaver Road, but we're really gonna look at it in a minor way for market issues, pedestrian circulation, and potentially minor zoning code changes based on some of the development patterns we've been seeing on Big Beaver.
One thing to keep in mind is, you know, a couple times, a couple applications come to mind where the applicant has been before the planning commission, and the planning commission says, you know, the zoning ordinance allows for higher, more intensity, higher, go bigger. I mean, twenty years ago, twenty years ago, you know, the, the, the planet, the, the city would have, was saying, whoa, you know, that's too, slow down. Now, we, we want the opposite. We're, we're asking for more than just one story. And the market, the developers, whatever the reasons are, we're not getting that, that mix, that vertical mix, and, you know, one of the, that's one of the issues, I think. So it, it's, it's, it's important because land values are at a point now where the market isn't really dictating that there be more intensity, but that's gonna change. But in the meantime, we, you know, what can we do to stimulate that?
Yeah, and the, and the other issue is, is this boundary line. You know, the boundary between the single-family to the north and the boundary to the Big Beaver is an issue that we need to look at. Because we allow, I think, up to twenty stories potentially in some of those developments which are adjacent to single-family. We got obviously a lot of some neighborhood concerns about McClure Development PUD there. We got some neighborhood concerns about this parcel that we just talked about. So we're also need to look at, in Big Beaver, if there needs to be some more appropriate transitions between Big Beaver corridor and the, the single-family neighborhoods just to the north. The other area we're gonna look at is North Troy. Really, there, we're gonna look at more at the issue of the off, current office vacancy as well as potentially looking to diversify land uses. The planning commission remembers this parcel came in for rezoning to allow for gymnastics. It was pulled. But those are the issues I think we're gonna experience more is kind of the, the reusing of some obsolete parcels in that area and potentially opening up land uses in there to get more of a, more of a twenty-four-hour field, a little bit more, more, more of an office-type, a different office-type use in there. And lastly is Rochester Road. Rochester Road focus is a little bit different. This is more looking at issues of height and land use buffer and transition, most specifically because of some of the issues we heard in the discussion with the one eight-hundred storage building with the five-story next to the single-family residential. We do think this in the long term, this will require some amendments to the GB and CB zoning designations. Our focus really was between Big Beaver Road and Waddles Road, because that's where we're gonna have, that's where you have the most issues between transitions of commercial and residential adjacent to it. However, in terms of market area, we can look farther north of Waddles Road from, from a market perspective, but really from changes in zoning or ordinance, we're really concentrating on this kind of corridor area here. So what we're gonna do for each of those four areas is we're gonna produce an economic and develop focus analysis, which will provide background information, existing conditions, highlight areas, strengths and weaknesses, and identify external threats and opportunities. This is kind of like an internal SWAT exercise that we will conduct. And the purpose of this is to, again, where this include a graphic summary of existing conditions, description of land use plan, area plan, et cetera. And the purpose of this is we are then gonna gather what we're calling a real estate forum. And these are gonna focus on these, the three areas that we noted. It's gonna, Rochester Road's gonna be helped, held, dealt with separately, but North Troy, Maple Road, and Big Beaver, we're gonna look at this real estate forum. And this is gonna work with local market and developers and the development community, the real estate community to understand really what the barriers are and what, and what the local market for those particular areas are. And we wanna really look at the market analysis of this area. particular areas are, and we wanna really look at the market analysis of this area, and really try to find some high-impact development sites, and some strategies to start spurring development in these areas. And each one's unique, so each one's gonna have different issues and opportunities, but we think collectively it's worth kind of comparing them all to each other and look at them holistically.
Do you have a whole question?
Go ahead.
Are you considering bringing in the economic development people from the city of Troy to hear what the developers.
Yeah, we are, we're working with Glenn Lapin on this, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce on this, too, in terms of bringing some of their people in, and they're actually providing us with some of the people they think need to be part of the forum moving And for Rochester Road, we're gonna do more of a workshop, it's gonna be open to general public, targeting really the adjacent property owners, and it's gonna look at some of the zoning issues and address issues of height, land use, and buffers and transition. So it's not necessarily market-focused, it's more zoning and community character and transition-focused for that area. So what happens is after we do this real estate forum, we're gonna then do specific area plans for each specific area, and this, these will or may include land use recommendations, transportation recommendations, zoning recommendations, as well as the market context moving forward for these particular areas. The last, the other thing we're gonna look at is a change in demographics. We, we talked about this earlier, and I think this, Troy's not unique, I think the thing to, to really think about is that changing in demographics will have a significant change on the operations of the city. By 2030, there're gonna be just as many people that are over 65 as there're gonna be under 18. And that really, we need to create strategies that really think about housing opportunities, housing needs, as well as social services and other services that are needed, medical issues moving forward. But we also need to think about how we're gonna address the desires of a younger population to attract them to Troy and make this a viable city moving forward. And they're not mutually exclusive, you know, you need, you need a tax base of younger employees and younger people that are working here to support some of the social services and the housing opportunities. So they're not exclusive, we need to make, keep that in mind in the future. The schedule for this is we are putting together a target area analysis of the four areas, we're working on that now through March, we have the, we have the forum and workshop scheduled for sometime in April, the day of that has not been confirmed, obviously you want all the planning commissioners member, to be present in those, in those two meetings and workshops, and then at that point, we'll then do the plan review and adoption. We're targeting a May and June time for consideration by the planning commission and adoption. That might be a little aggressive, but we really wanna keep this a tight schedule so we can actually get this done this year.
Will there have to be public hearings then during the May and June?
There will be public hearings as part of the plan review and adoption by the planning commission.
Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Hudson?
I'm gonna go from a very general overview to a couple of specific areas. It seems like every other site plan we have approved, we've had to mention that missing is the bike rack, these developments. And I think that our master plan is deficit in that we've provided for bike racks and our promoted walkability. How about putting some bicycle lanes in the master plan as part of our wish to kind of complement the walkability and the bike racks? And the other one is, and I really haven't even thought this one through, but I was thinking, we spent a lot of time on the zoning, talking about adult bookstores and those sort of things. Marijuana's a hot button right now. We've got medical marijuana, and it looks like states across the country are legalizing it. Is that something we ought to spend any time or attention to in our zoning ordinance as to the location of any of those operations or not? I don't know, I just, I haven't thought this thing out yet, but I throw it out for consideration.
Yeah, that's more of a, that's a legal and zoning issue more than it is a master plan issue, as you just said. I think our, our city attorney right now would probably say that we're defen, well, Alan, are you, can you, can you respond? I, I could, I could butcher it a little bit, but I think you could probably respond a little bit better as to our, city attorney's take on this issue.
Will we still take the stance that marijuana is still illegal under federal law? You know, sense of planning on something that could be shut down sometime?
Well, could I suggest that California is taking the same stance and said, forget it, we're still gonna go ahead and do it, and our wonderful attorney general has essentially said, we're gonna turn your back on it and ignore it and do what you want. So I would think maybe a little foresight, and we don't have to enact anything, but kind of think this thing through so that we've got an answer to it, to when it comes.
Mr. Schultz? Just a comment, and I realize that it might be an exercise in futility, but I think it would be an exercise worth looking at. We talked time and time and time again about the Maple Road corridor, and with the upcoming complete reconstruction of I-75 over the next 10, 12 years, however long it's going to take, I think it would be in the city's benefit to the city to put together an economic justification to present to the Department of Transportation for the installation of some sort of an urban slip lane exit from I-75, entrance exit from I-75 to Maple Road, because if businesses had direct access to the freeway, you would see huge spur in economic development on Maple Road. And having looked at the amount of right-of-way they have on there, there's, there certainly appears to me to be sufficient space to put an exit and entrance system similar to what they use in the Los Angeles area at Maple Road. I realize it's only a mile from 14 Mile, but I think if the city put the proper economic justification together, it would be at least worth taking a shot at it, instead of just saying, oh, well, you know, the Department of Transportation says it, it can't happen, and going, well, nothing happens if you don't ask. So I think it would be very beneficial to put a justification together to say, since you're gonna be carrying out every bridge between 8 Mile and Square Lake and rebuilding the entire road, here's the impact a new exit at 15 Mile could have on this city. Because I guarantee you, when, when 696 is redone, I bet Farmington Hills is gonna be asking for some additional exits in that seven-mile stretch they have with no exits on it.
That's a, that's a good point, something to look at.
Any other questions? Mr. Stroud?
No, I think that in conjunction with what we're talking about doing, it would be to our advantage to re-review the study that was done for the Big Beaver corridor study. What were the important factors that really created a well-known or a beautiful road? What are the, what are the issues there? And I think that we should really revisit those and see if we can apply that to also like Rochester Road.
Comment about bike paths, bike trails? There were, the city undertook and completed a trailway plan around 2009 or 2010. Used a regional expert named Norm Cox, does really good stuff, and the timing of the trailway plan was just around when the economy tanked, and the, the plan never really saw the light a day after that.
Taking a look at it.
And funny you should mention that. We're revisiting, we're in the process of amending the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan that will come before planning commission, before going to council, and at this time, it, it looks like the trailway plan will be incorporated into the, into the mask, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan with kind of the caveat that this is four or five years old now, and, I mean, to, to, if we were to pay for all the improvements recommended in the plan, it would be, I forget how many millions of dollars it would cost, but certainly to revisit that plan and take elements of that plan and move forward, so, so you'll see, you'll be seeing something.
Andrew? And just to piggyback on that, as part of the recreation plan, we did a survey, and we got over 800 responses, which is, which is pretty high for, for a recreation plan survey, and the overwhelming response of what people desired was trails and pathways. Over 51% of the respondents listed as one of their top three amenities, and we gave a list of 20 different amenities, so the fact that 51 had them in the top three was significant. So it's a, it's a amenity that this community is very much in favor of and desirable of.
And it wasn't just, it wasn't just one or two segments of society, it was across every, every, it was age, ethnicity, where you live, you know, education, it was across the board. Overwhelming.
And it was funny, the, the, the many's desire were more passive type of recreational opportunities, paths and a dog park and stuff like that. Increase in basketball courts and tennis courts and all that was very, very low on the, on the desirable list, so really, you can kind of see a little shift in the population, too, just for what the desired amenities are as well.
The other comments?
No, I, please, we're going forward, I think that's the plan, and I think we should do it.
Mr. Shurkey?
Yes, I would like to know, you want to involve the planning commission in these workshops and the start an analysis, I'd like to, what can, what can we do as a planning commission to prepare to aid in the development and the success of these meetings? What do you want us to focus on to make these things more viable, these meetings more viable? Is there something we can do in preparing ahead of time so that we can come in and, and help the participants, you know, make this a success, so that we can all gain from it?
I recommend revisiting the existing master plan, the one that's, that's, was adopted in 2008, because then, we're, we're gonna provide information to the planning commission members, the demographics and the background information, so you'll be able to prepare as well. So you'll get a, you'll get a sense for the context of what, the way, the way the world was in 2008, and what we kind of put together in terms of moving forward, our vision and goals and policies, and then with the, with the updated information, demographics, et cetera, you'll be able to kind of, you'll be caught up to where we are today, and then, and then be, and then go there to the meeting with your sleeves rolled up, ready to participate.
Yeah, I like the idea, I really like the idea. We've got January almost behind us already, and that scares me a little bit because we're getting a late kick at it, and.
There's, yeah, there's been some background work that's been already been started, so we've already started this process, too. The hard, the, the thing that we need to do is schedule, the most important thing is to schedule the dates of these, this forum and the workshop, and once we get those finalized, we'll let the planning commission know, and we would hope that everyone would attend those, those meetings.
I'd like to see that. That's great.
And the February 11th joint meeting with the city council, probably be some more input.
We're gonna talk about this at that, at that meeting as well.
Be talked about.
I just, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to review the Big Beaver corridor, especially the Kmart thing, you know, it's a large track of land, and there's a lot of opportunities there, mixed uses, and I think it'd be wise to really focus on that, and to really, you know, the real estate forum would be really interesting to hear what developers may think would be the best use for that land and how it would be developed. So it's a large track, there's a lot of opportunities there, and all the utilities are there, and it wouldn't take a lot to develop it, and it is some really phenomenal property.
Is the real estate forum going to be held here?
Uh, we don't know yet, we don't know exact location.
I know the last time we had some of the public hearings at the MSU management, so.
Part of it will also include a tour, I mean, we want, we want whoever's on the forum, whoever's on the panel, or however we organize it, to actually go out and look at these places, too, and have a real understanding of what they, what they entail. So it'll be probably part mobile and part here.
Mr. Schultz?
I agree with what Mr. Sanzika said, but I think possible, or probably the owner of the Kmart site has a pretty good idea what, in the long term, they're gonna do with that piece of property, since it's owned by one individual, so. We can, we can make all the recommendations we want, but they're probably gonna come back with their own plan, when, when the time is right to develop it.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to invite the owner?
He's trying to get an O of them. If you have any inroads to him, well.
Positive on that note is it's controlled by PUD.
That's what I was gonna say, it's already a PUD, right?
So, I mean, it's gonna, I'm, I'm gonna guess that they're gonna wanna do something that's not exactly as approved, or it's gonna have to be amended, but the zoning's in place.
Right. Then, the, there was a member of the Downtown Development Authority that was an employee of the owner of that property, so that might be a way to get an inroad. Mr. Shurkey?
Another thing we're talking about is redevelopment of these areas, and I would like to see if, if we're truly interested in doing this, I think we ought to address the, the idea of the signage, the signage ordinance is in Troy, because height, size, illumination, a lot of these things fit hand-in-hand with this development of these areas, and there's a lot of problems that we could eliminate ahead of time if we could maybe put some forethought in making it more desirable for these lands and these areas to be developed, if we could put some reasonable, some reasonable ordinance on the book that would be advantageous to people to develop these areas.
Problem is, at this point, they're not within the purview of the planning commission, and as we talked at the last meeting, efforts are going forward right now to get some engagement on that and try to feel, feel out what are the sensitive issues. One of the things that we've discussed is that we don't wanna push the city council for something that's gonna be dead on arrival, or even in the administration, so we're, we're trying to feel all that out, and we'll be getting back to you on that.
Well, that's good, one of the main things is, is exciting to, to get involved in the development of these areas, they've been wanting, wanting for such a long time.
I was gonna ask one other question about the, the joint meeting with the city council, I think, isn't one of the other topics, the height of building in Rochester Road corridor?
Correct.
Are we preparing anything for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
We actually, we presented potential draft zoning ordinance language for consideration that we can actually start getting done sooner than later, in terms of addressing some of those issues.
Okay, I, I would hope that some of that might be with the planning commission, leaving it before we necessarily talk at the joint meeting, if there's anything that's, can be shared with the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole, yes, and, and we're not going specifics, but just the fact that there are some opportunities in terms of lowering the height, making setbacks, we're gonna give a wide range of options that we're gonna consider as part of this process.
Anything else on this topic? Not, I think we're ready to move on to number nine, the bylaw.
This, this is initiated by me, when I realized that we hadn't looked at these bylaws since, not been up since 2008, and we updated a new zoning ordinance in 2011, and the, some of the, some of the responsibilities and some things have changed, so it's time, it's time. And just to summarize, some of the things that, the revisions that I'm proposing, or that, my, and I bounced this off Alan, he looked at it and had some really good input as well, but, and I welcome the planning commission input to really kind of tighten these up. The chairman's already given me some, some ideas and some, caught a couple of typos. I know it's, it's a shocker, but there were a couple of minor changes in there. Yeah, it's amazing, it's a miracle. But just to summarize, you know, the state acts that were referenced in the, at the beginning in Section 1 were, were not updated, they need to be updated, they need to be changed. The document refers to the Zoning Board of Appeals as the Board of Zoning Appeals, which it used to be known as years ago. This is where, where I kind of realized that, that we needed to do some revisions, is the city council, in, in the existing bylaws, the, the planning commission makes a recommendation for the appointment of the BZA rep and the BZ alternate, well, we don't do that anymore, we just make a recommendation with BZA rep. Okay, there you go, ZBA rep, so that, that needs to be changed. So that, that needs to be changed. Um, th- this is one that, we struggled with this years ago and I think it's time we just fix this. Under the Open Meetings Act, what, what, what we do with the planning commission is we, the planning commission approves a schedule for the next calendar year. And we do that in November or December and we post the schedule. And those are technically, under the Open Meetings Act, are regular meetings. And what that, they're regular meetings because they're scheduled in advance, they're posted, and you can conduct business and make decisions. So they're regular meetings under the Open Meetings Act. But our bylaws call the second meeting of the week a regular meeting and refers to the fourth Tuesday of the week as a special slash study meeting. And a special slash study meeting isn't even described in here. They're both regular meetings, okay? We can, we conduct, we, we regularly conduct business. We, we review site plans and special use applications and PUDs at the fourth, the special study meeting. So it is a regular meeting, so let's just call it a regular meeting. So that, I, I think that it just.
Why don't we just call it a meeting? Why do we have to call it a regular meeting?
Well, because, because the, the, the bylaws also give the planning commission the ability to schedule special meetings and study meetings. So there's different types of meetings, but it, there's a, there's certainly an implication in, in the way that they, and feel free to jump in anytime, Alan. There's an implication under the bylaws that, that you, you, you conduct business at the regular, the second Tuesday, but you, you can't really conduct business and make decisions at the fourth Tuesday, which is practicality review.
When I started on the planning commission, we could only conduct business on, at a regular meeting.
Exactly, exactly. And, and the bylaws reflect that old culture.
That's the way we operate.
Exactly, we don't operate that way anymore. So I think it's time, so I don't, I don't think I'm getting anything pushed.
I, I think at, at that time, weren't there actually three meetings a month?
Yes, yep.
Which we don't.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, um, there are some inconsistencies in the or, the new ordinance and, and the bylaws in terms of what the planning commission acts can approve and, and, and only recommend. It's been changed, we, you've actually got more authority now than you did in two thousand eight, so that needs to be updated. It, it doesn't say in the, in the bylaws today that the planning department actually performs the duties of secretary, which we've always done. It just needs to be spelled out because you don't have a, the planning commission doesn't appoint a secretary that takes minutes and whatnot, so. The order of business isn't consistent with the way that we conduct business today. It needs to be consistent with our agendas and, and plus some typos and some formatting and things like that. So, um, that's, that's the, uh, the changes that we recommend. Everyone was given a draft copy of the markups. I would note, we don't have to approve it tonight. If, if we do, it needs a, six votes to, to approve any revisions. If you wanted to discuss tonight, you know, if other, if other members have comments or things that, that we wanna talk about or think about, we don't have to adopt it tonight. I can, we can take comments and give you a revised draft if you'd like, whatever, however you wanna proceed. But we recommend that, that in the near future that we, we update the, the bylaws to make them consistent with state law and with our zoning ordinance. Do you have anything to add, Alan?
Uh, no, that pretty much summarizes it. The, the Open Meetings Act makes a reference to special meetings and regular meetings. And that's why it's probably important that we differentiate between the two in our bylaws. The special meeting can be called on short notice, whereas a regular meeting, as Brent indicated, under the Open Meetings Act, is a meeting that's scheduled at the beginning of the year. So, so since all the meetings are scheduled at the beginning of the year, it makes sense to call them regular meetings.
And when we meet with developers and they talk about timing and whatnot, I tell them, we've got two meetings a month, second and fourth Tuesday, we conduct business on both. So that's how we, like, you're right, Mr. Schultz, we used to just conduct business the second Tuesday. We've changed and we really, we use both. This, this is a more intimate and, and better for just this type of a study meeting, but we also take care of business here too. Yeah. Absolutely.
You said you, you talked to Alan about this. Has the city attorney's office signed off on these changes before we go approving them?
I, the city attorney has not reviewed the proposed changes. I have, uh, I suppose it probably would be a good idea that run by my boss.
I think, I think before we go approving anything, we ought to have the city attorney sign off that these changes are accurate and what's allowed.
Yeah, and again, the, the intent was to kind of introduce it this evening, get any feedback, anything, anyone wanted to, to add? Does anyone have anything they wanna?
One thing I'd like to discuss is on section seven, where it talks about voting shall be by a rotating roll call. The record of the roll call vote shall be kept as part of the minutes. And I would suggest that there may be some items that we could do with voice vote. You know, for example, the, the approval of the agenda in minutes. And if you do, you know, if there is something that you feel that's contentious or that could be, you know, that could be, um, subject to, to rezoning or something, that, that we do request a roll call vote. So, uh, I know I've been in other committees where they have allowed voice votes and I know it's been the policy to do it that way. But I, I like to discuss and if it might improve the pace of the meeting if we could do more voice votes too, rather than having all roll calls.
So are you suggesting that we do, um, that we, we have, we conduct most votes as a voice vote unless?
Requested.
Unless requested?
Roll call vote, yes.
Okay, so could it be, I'm just trying to come up with a way to, to, to write this. So, so I hear what you're saying, so something like minutes?
Yeah.
Where, where, where it's, where it's clearly, I move, someone moves to, to approve them as, as written and there's a second, well, chances are.
It's gonna be unanimous.
It's gonna be unanimous.
You could always have someone have enabled and you could say, say by voice vote that there's enabled and you could record that as enabled and, and. But if you do want a specific item for rezoning or something that's, that could be an issue later on, uh, that you could ask for a roll call vote, right?
How about, how about doing everything by voice vote, but if there's a dissenting vote, it goes back and gets voice voted so that it's recorded as to who is in favor and who is not. Another option would be to have the negative vote actually give a reason why. And then it would be reflected in a minute, minutes as to who it was.
I think we do do that right now.
Yes, we do.
Sometimes.
I think it'd be nice to have it in the, in the.
In the minutes.
The bylaws.
I wondered if maybe it'd be easier to, for all the preliminary stuff like the, the approval of the agenda, the minutes and, and anything like that. But when you get to site planner reviews, I think it's, it's appropriate to have a roll call vote.
Yeah, I agree with, with Alan. That, uh, on procedural items, voice vote is fine, but I think we're getting to a substantive item. I think a recorded vote is gonna be important.
That's our primary job, so.
Anything under, under, on the agenda, under other business would require a voice vote? Cause there was, there was a recommendation several years ago that we not read resolutions, that we simply say, I move the resolution as printed. And I personally disagree with that because if somebody's watching on television, they have no idea what we're voting on unless we read the resolution. City council does, resolution as printed, and unless you have a copy of the full agenda, you have no idea what they're voting on.
Right.
So for the two and a half minutes that it takes to read a resolution, even our longest resolution, I don't think, and I really don't know that eliminating voice vote is gonna, um, five or six items each night. I, I agree with the procedural stuff, but eliminating voice vote isn't gonna save half an hour a year in meeting time, I don't think.
Does that seem to be a consensus?
I like the idea, personally, I like the idea of the procedural being the voice, the voice vote. And then the substantive, I like the words too, procedural versus substantive.
Yeah, I, I think you've got a litigant in here or a litigant, an applicant, somebody applying. Uh, it's gonna be important for that person to know who is getting what.
Then, then perhaps our agenda should also, where now it says other business, it should be procedural items and substantive business or, or business items as the classification. And procedural items will be done by voice vote and business items will be done, or by roll call.
Well, I think you still need to do the roll call at the beginning of the meeting too.
For the, for the tenants?
Yeah, for a roll call, yes.
For tenants, that would be.
Put procedural items below roll call.
Thinking outside the box. I like it. Okay.
Uh, one other thing that I had discussed with Brent was, I know we all now sign the ethics provisions form. I wonder if some reference to that needs to be made in the, in the bylaws. How, how planning commissioners, you know, conduct themselves. As well as even members of the public. I know that the city council does that too for the, for the, for the public. But I don't know if we've had that much trouble, but I just think it might be for our bylaws, it might be appropriate to do that. That's just a suggestion, I don't, I don't have any strong feeling.
May I?
Yes.
Uh, refresh my memory because I've never served on a board in Troy. When, when you are appointed, you, you sign an agreement saying that you're gonna abide by the ethics provisions and they're city of Troy ethics provisions?
That's a direction side of ethical.
Okay.
You also have to be sworn by the city clerk or.
At least once.
Yeah, at the beginning.
Or every time you're reappointed or something.
Okay.
The rules change from time to time.
So we should reference the fact that you shall abide by the ethics.
And I, I don't know if that's the specific wording, if it's about ethics policy, which.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's good, that's good. Anything else? I'm sorry.
Now Brent, uh, are you thinking that we'll have also the public meetings in here? Is that what you're saying? Is that, you know, we're gonna have the same meetings here as we do in the chambers?
No, I'm, I'm saying that these are still, these, these meetings still tend to be more study meeting in nature, but, but there's, that they're technically regular meetings. And I, I'm not suggesting we're gonna change the venue. If, if there was an item, if there was an application that said, you know, we have to go the fourth Tuesday and I knew that there was gonna be a hundred people here, we would, we would, we would hold it there. But, but I'm not suggesting that we schedule, we change the room assignment. I think this, I think this works well. Makes sense?
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to know how you were gonna work it so we know how we're gonna dress, right?
Yeah. So Thursdays are, are the, the fourth Tuesday.
Please, please wear clothes, Tom.
The fourth, the fourth Thursday is still casual day. Versus, versus the second Tuesday, which is more formal.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna know where I should wear. On the second Tuesday, we'll be wearing robes and powdered wigs.
Yeah, that's not gonna change. So the biggest change is gonna be in the, if you, the biggest change is gonna be, um, uh, hold on a second. Oops, what am I doing? The only change this is gonna result in is that right there, on the fourth Tuesday, it's gonna say regular.
Yeah, no, and then below roll call, it's going to say.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm talking in terms of the meeting, the name of the meeting. I mean, it's still gonna be in the council boardroom, it's still gonna be at seven o'clock, everything's gonna be the same except this is gonna say regular. Now, Mr. Schultz's, that, that's gonna change as well.
Yeah, see, when, years back, of course, we had three sessions, uh, three meetings a month, but, uh, we were here until eleven, twelve o'clock too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there were situations where we were really jam packed and that was during the heydays. Now, I agree with you, that's a different time. So, uh, we're just updating.
Yep.
I know, I, I don't think our meetings last duly long here in Milwaukee.
No.
Even with the more constitutional issues, so.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll update these, I'll give them to Alan to give the okay to, make sure Lori has a look at them and we'll come back and for your consideration for approval. Sound good? Excellent.
Uh, as we're down to agenda item number ten, American Planning Association and the National Conference, attendance by a planning commissioner.
Yeah. There was a time where I, I might get my numbers wrong, so Mr. Schultz, Mr. Strad, you may remember. I wanna say the training and education budget for the planning commission, when I first started here, was ten thousand dollars a year. Ten thousand.
Yeah.
Which, uh.
Including the staff as well?
No, just for the planning commission.
Right.
We had a separate, I've, there's a separate planning, planning budget and planning commission budget. So when I started here, going on twelve years ago, it was ten thousand a year. And that, that afforded the opportunity for all planning commissioners to go to the state conference. For educators, those watching at home, the state conference is an incredible educational opportunity and you learn a lot and you, you become a much better planning commissioner and planner by attending. So it's very important and very, uh, very helpful. So that afforded every planning commissioner the opportunity to attend. And if there was money left over of the ten thousand, depending on how much money, it afforded opportunity for one or more planning commissioners to attend the national conference, which is, which is another, it's even more opportunity to, to, for education. It's incredible. So when, when, um, the, the, we hit the economic downturn, we reorganized, you know, we, there was a lot of cost cutting. And one of the things, one of the, one of the results of the cost cutting was that the training and education budget for the planning commission was reduced, I think to three thousand. If I'm off a little bit, but it was, it was reduced. So that, what that did is it really limited, it basically eliminated the potential to, to attend the national conference. Last fiscal year, I think I announced at a planning commission meeting, the training education budget was upped to six thousand, which, which, which is really good because again, it allows all planning commissioners, for the most part, to attend the state conference. It also provides opportunity for new planning commissioners to attend seminars and whatnot. And if there's any money left over, it was, this is, this is part of the, the increase. It, it could send a planning commissioner or however many, depending on how much budget was left, to attend the national conference. There are enough monies, based on a, an estimate of how much it would cost to send a planning commissioner, there are enough monies to send one planning commissioner to the national con, national, uh, American Planning Association cons, conference, which is in Atlanta, Georgia this year in, in April. And, and, uh, this is an opportunity, we've had, I've had one planning commissioner indicate interest in going. I just wanted to see if there's anyone else who's interested going. Um, if there were more than one, we would come up with a, a way to determine who goes, but, but one can go. So, um, that's why we're, that's why it's an agenda item is, is, um, to see if anyone else is interested. And if not, then we've got one planning commissioner who is interested. And in order to send anyone to, to the national conference, we need a resolution from, um, the planning commission, which I made a copy and circulated it around.
One, I'm just gonna say, I, uh, had the, I was very fortunate in being able to attend soon after I was appointed to the planning commission Minneapolis conference. And, uh, I do think it's important that whoever does attend these national conferences brings some type of report back to us. And, uh, and that either a written report or photos or photo study or whatever. I think that we should, there should be some benefit to the whole planning commission for attendance at a national conference. It is a privilege, it really is, but.
You can also bring back links to websites, you can bring back, uh, sometimes there's electronic discs or flash drives with information on it. There's, there's a lot of different ways that that report can be provided.
I just wanted to add, uh, I was the one that, uh, forward that I'd like to attend this one. The reason I want to attend especially this one is it's in Atlanta. I've, I've been following a, a development there over the years. Uh, they, where they redeveloped a brownfield area, which was a steel mill, uh, into a really vibrant, uh, city within the city of Atlanta, Atlanta. Uh, it's called, um, Atlantic Station. Uh, it's the, sort of like their catchphrase, is they're the twenty-four hour city within the city. Uh, it's incredibly vibrant. I would like to take, well, I will be taking photographs of it. I, I would be happy to bring back a PowerPoint presentation, uh, especially on that particular development because it's, you know, we're, we're looking at brownfield here. Uh, we're looking at how do we attract youth, how do we make this a more, um, entertainment center of Oakland County? These are the kind of things that are there and I'd like to witness that and bring back that information. And, and also I served on the Troy Trails Committee and they have a wonderful trail system developed, which is called, uh, Atlanta Belt Line. And it's a twenty-two mile, it's not complete yet, but it's a, it's a ring. Basically what it was, was a railroad system around old Atlanta. And, uh, again, I'd like to experience that and bring back info on that.
Any further comments, discussion?
I'm just curious, when is the state conference and where is, what would be the?
It's in October, I don't have the exact date, but it'll be in, it'll be on Mackinac.
That will be next fiscal year. That will be the next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
Oh, so we don't have to worry about that right now. The other reason that the, I know one of the reasons that the, uh, city council agreed to the increase in the training budget for the planning was for members to maintain their certification. There are a lot of, lot of other paid workshops during the year. their certification, there are a lot, a lot of other paid workshops during the year, there's a leadership academy coming up, I think even in April of this year, for the master citizen planner, so you can maintain your certi, certification at those, and, and not necessarily attend the national, or state or national conference.
I asked Oakland, I asked Charlotte Burkhardt from Oakland County to win the next round of, of county seminars, or she said that there'll be information coming out sooner, she's looking at February, March, April, so.
Good for our new member, right?
Yep, for sure.
Those are also good.
As well as, it's good for not only good, new members, but I, I try to go to those because they're typically free, and the neat part about it, you always learn something new, you know, so.
And you meet some, meet some nice people, and, yep.
Okay, so is there anyone else who would like to express an interest in attending the, the Atlantic, Atlantic Conference this year?
Uh, I would suggest that someone move the proposed resolution.
Chairman, I'll take the resolution, whereas, planning commission budget for FY two, thirteen, twenty thirteen and fourteen has an education, and training budget intended to provide educational opportunities at seminars and conferences, whereas, there is a sufficient remaining balance in the education and training budget to support attendance by one planning commission member at the American Planning Association Annual APA Conference, therefore be a result of the city of Troy Planning Commissioner Tom Krenn may attend the two thousand and fourteen APA Annual Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, be it further resolved, the planning commission member, um, Tom Krenn shall present a report to the planning commission based on experience attending the conference.
Mr. Second. Say it about Mr. Shstratt. Further discussion? The roll call is.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzikin?
Yes.
Mr. Shapke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Jangle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hope it's cold.
Sour grapes.
Yeah, phrases to agenda item number eleven, a public comment for items, or items on the current agenda, seeing no one, we move on to, uh, planning commissioner comments for this evening, start with, uh, Mr. Boss.
No comments, thanks.
No comment.
No comment.
No.
No.
No, thanks. Me neither.
I've just got one, and it was a request from the zoning board, um, for me to approach planning commission and say, there've been specific items that came before the zoning board, that they wanted the planning commission to review, and, one, I'm just gonna pass around, this was a request for a porch on an existing nineteen-sixties style Troy home, I'll pass it around, you can better look, which we're all pretty familiar with, this kind of a style of architecture, the owner wanted to update, and you can't see this too well, I'm gonna pass it around, they proposed a porch on the front with, that was covered, our zoning ordinance allows for the porch, but not a covering over the porch, and since this, as you'll see, it was a, I thought was spectacular, um, addition to their home, everybody on the zoning board agreed, this is, this should go forward, but we couldn't find anything the ordinance allow it, and, uh, we didn't want, again, the zoning board didn't want to have, well, if we find a variance for this one, what about all the other neighbors, are they all gonna have to pay the hundred fifty dollar fee and come before us, we really should look at our neighborhoods as they age, and how we can bring them up to architectural, you know, higher level architectural quality, and possibly change some of the ordinance to allow these nice developments to occur.
Did the zoning board of appeals pass a resolution for these, for the suggestion, or just kind of discussed?
Uh, for, we, we discuss, or the, yeah, we discussed, there was a call for a resolution to me to formally do that, and, and it was just, it got a conversation, never, we never put out a resolution, I could certainly bring that back and say.
I'm just curious, I'll, I'll talk to Paul about.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, as much, as many specifics as possible, I think are important, and that's, one of the primary functions of the ZPA is to, if they're approving all of the variances that come before them, that usually means there's something wrong with your, with your ordinances, so, uh, that's the whole point, and so, otherwise, one of, one of the things that the city attorney's office does is the, uh, update on the sunshine laws and, and the open meetings, that type of thing, so, uh, I think, you know, they're, they're definitely doing the job that we expected of them, and, uh, we would certainly welcome that kind of input, especially for, for zoning ordinance, text amendments, that type of thing.
I'll bring it back to them.
Yeah, I don't know, do you know what the, the background was as to why it doesn't allow for coverings?
Setbacks.
Was it setbacks?
Yes, it was setback laws.
What becomes a setback.
Becomes a structure.
Because part of the building, because part of the building.
They measure to that. Let me take on the status of all those outdoor rooms that the zoning board of appeals deals with, approaching the back setback.
I never met one they didn't like.
And also then enclosing the porch, you know, with windows, becomes the, the new sunroom, addition to. Okay, any, where were we at?
Caffey.
Caffey.
None, thank you.
Roy?
Uh, uh, really quick, um, Mr., I think it was Mr. Schultz, was asking, at a previous meeting, the status of the Troy shops, the Ark and Jonah Building on the south side of Big Beaver, just west of Crux.
Transparency?
The tran, the transparency, yes, um, we had an internal meeting with the owner, and a very, very high-ranking member of our, of, uh, Lazy Boy, talked about the issues, and we're moving, we're moving forward, this, these corporate things tend to take a little bit longer than just snapping your fingers to get, to get them taken care of, but, we had a face-to-face with them, we told him what the issues were, so he was clear, he's a little bit unsure of what exactly we were trying to accomplish, and what the requirements were, so, um, I think we're moving towards a resolution, so, I haven't, haven't forgotten about it, but.
But efforts on that seven eleven that paid off, now it's completely transparent.
Looks way better, doesn't it?
Absolutely, it is.
Yep, yep, and this is, um, just, just to piggyback on that, I, I don't know if I said this before, but, you know, we, we kind of, we're kind of, we kind of learned a lesson, and, and when we adopted the ordinance, is we really could've done a better job of communicating with the building department on, on the, on the transparency requirements, because what they're looking at, they're looking at the building code, and we didn't do, we, me, didn't do a good job of, of really communicating the transparency requirements, and it needs to be clear to the applicant, at the first application meeting, to let them know what the requirements are, let them know that our, that we're gonna require that those, those windows be transparent, not be covered in advertising, or black coloring, or whatever, and, and even, I think we should go far as to put a note on the site plan, so that, that's, it's, it's actually, maybe even a condition of approval, to really, I mean, I don't think we could be heavy-handed enough with this, because we, what we want is, is, you know, look at, look at the Lazy Boy, they've got, you know, I'm gonna be off with a couple thousand, they've got seventy-five thousand cars a day, that potentially could be looking in their windows, and they can't see in, it, it's a beautiful store, if you've been in that Lazy Boy, it's a beautiful store, and, I think it's, I'm not a marketer or realtor, but I think it's lost opportunity, but be that as it may, what we're trying to accomplish with the Big Beaver Corner is transparency, having that, that relationship, that engagement, and moving forward, we have to make sure that that doesn't happen again, so.
Mr. Zanzikin? I, something keen of mine, I apologize for not bringing it up earlier, but I happened to go to Corolla's the other day, and I did know that there is a side door in Corolla's that you can exit, uh, whereas Bonefish, they, I think it's an emergency exit, so, I think there are doors there, I just, maybe the application of the emergency exit could be changed at the Corolla's if they are, or Bonefish if they had so wished to, I don't think there's any ordinance or any requirement, that door would have to be an emergency exit, but, uh, for handicapped people especially, I think, um, they could use that door, it is a more, uh, it is a shorter distance to get into the restaurant, rather than going all the way.
It may be an emergency exit, though.
Well, they.
With all probabilities, it is.
Problem is, it didn't say it was an emergency exit, but it may.
Just has to have a sign on top that it's an exit.
Above an inside.
Doesn't have to say anything, but a second means vigorous, in case one is blocked, you just can't, uh, have it blocked like that.
I think, I, I think the only point is that we should look at that in the future.
But along the same lines, uh, you know, like, uh, you were talking about with that seven eleven, I went inside, and actually, you know, they're, they've got that blocked up pretty well, but they've got things, and, you know, they're, they're displaying their merchandise there, so, you know, and I, I know that you felt that it was open and transparent, but it wasn't.
Have you seen it today?
Windows blocked.
No, I.
It is.
Well, I've got photographs of it.
Why, I saw you taking photographs about a month ago.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it, it is open today?
It's open today, yeah, and all that covering off the windows is gone, and you can see right through, it's good.
Mr. Schultz? Back to Brent's comment about transparency, it's not just Lazy Boy in that building, it's also Sprint that has all their windows blacked out, and I realize it's a PUD, but the other Jonah property on the north side of Big Beaver is an even bigger problem.
Yeah, right, and I.
Than the one we're dealing with.
I can tell you anecdotally that the owner is, uh, having, is engaging the, the various tenants in, in conversations to deal with that too.
Because AT&T looks like it's out of business.
Looks like, looks like it's either.
It's coming soon.
Coming soon or left town already, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
I mean, I talked, the, the, the AT&T store at Somerset has now closed, uh, this one on Big Beaver replaced it, but the people at the AT&T store at Somerset were getting phone calls wanting to know when the store on Big Beaver was going to open, and it had already been open for a month.
It's, we talk about transparency, one of the things it does is it invites you.
That's right.
Makes it attractive, that scares you away, I wouldn't want, there's nothing inviting about that design, nothing, I agree, I agree with you.
And if you look at, like, the Sprint store on the south side, the blackout doesn't go all the way to the top, so they have network cables, I mean, it looks like you're looking at the back of a warehouse, along one of the busiest thoroughfares in Oakland County, I just don't get it, but obviously, the owner of the building did what they had to do to get the tenants in there.
Yeah, I can tell you this, regarding the Lazy Boy, according to the, the person we talked to, was, again, it was a high-ranking representative of Lazy Boy, when they bring in the Nashville folks for a meeting in Michigan, even regionally, they go there, that's, that's the location they meet at, that's the showcase store.
It's the newest store, sure, yep.
Anything else? Uh, the only thing I would just, a couple of housekeeping things, uh, for your information, I, I will be changing the seats at the, uh, regular meeting in the, in the council boardroom, and if you have any trouble with those, please see me, uh, also, we're gonna probably put Ben over near, uh.
Brent.
Brent and, and Alan on that other, and so, they are not, you know, so many times they're, they wanna inter, interface, and so, some of the stuff that, I think it just will make the meeting a little more, uh, smooth, and, uh, that's about it, uh, oh, and one other thing, if you're gonna be absent at a meeting, I think it's really important that you let, send, just send a quick email to Brent, or leave a voicemail for him, and if you do send an email, then copy me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, if you could, if you, sorry, if you could send an email to me, and copy Caffey, and the chair, the chairman, Mr. Evans, that'd be great.
Okay, that's good. Any other comments? If not, I think we're adjourned.